So with that, just to do a time check, it's eight twenty-eight and gonna be finishing here for a year in about an hour. So there will be some modifications to the agenda. But I am looking to get these minutes passed quickly. Appreciate any being concise in your comments and if we can avoid any unnecessary comments, that'd be awesome. Counselor Andrade.
As stated previously, I think it's very important to have at least a generalized reason as to why something is the way it is. I will point back to earlier when during the the ordinance discussion for the chapter one citizen committee for citizen involvement and how I had questions about three items because all it said was there was discussion about X, discussion about Y, discussion about Z. And as Counselor Bisco has pointed out, we're all volunteers. I haven't unfortunately haven't been able to keep up on watching the videos of the meetings. And if we had, oh, and and by asking the city manager for that context and not and him not being able to give me those answers.
Of order. Is this, I'm sorry, is this relevant to the future conversation that we're going to be having in a in the next hour about?
No, it's it's about this conversation.
But we're really trying to focus on the minutes from this meeting. So I'm gonna just.
I'm talking to the minutes of this meeting and my amendment, I still think that it should be in that my I'm I'm speaking to my motion.
Except you're actually out of order because in our city council rules, it says that you should not be repetitive and you've already stated all of this.
I didn't about the city manager not being not being able to answer my questions. And therefore, it makes sense to at least have some sort of description in there as to why something was.
Thank you. Counselor Nielsen.
Is it possible that I can move the previous question and just get a vote or move this along a bit in this this plane?
Absolutely. So we have a call for the question by Counselor Nielsen and seconded by Counselor Lehman.
And Mayor Jones, point of order.
Yes.
You have allowed Chris Workman to speak to this motion. I would like to finish speaking to this motion.
I'm sorry, we had a question called.
Yes, but I had raised my hand and was not finished with my statement before that call.
The call for the call for the question is a privileged motion, actually.
Mayor, I was speaking and the council rules also call for you to allow me to finish speaking. And when three of you are jumping call of order because you don't want to hear what's said and you have given a.
Sorry, Counselor Bisco, you're again out of order. Jim Brewer, as parliamentarian, do I have the ability to call her out of order? And call a recess or?
Well, yes, you do have the ability to call somebody out of order into recess. She can, of course, appeal to the rest of the council. Right now, though, you have Counselor Nielsen's call for the question, and that is the issue on the floor.
That's right. And so we can vote on whether or not we should call a question if somebody would like to do that. Otherwise, we can vote on the motion at hand, which is City Recorder, can you please tell us what we're actually voting on now?
Well, I believe, Mr. Brewer, don't we need to vote on the call for the question?
You do. It's clear that that's not unanimous.
Okay, so then therefore, all in favor of calling for the question, please raise your.
I.
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 Opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So the motion carries two to five. So now we can vote on the motion at hand. And City Recorder, can you please let us know what we're voting on? And City and Counselor Bisco, could you please take your hand down?
The motion is on page eleven, line thirty of the January twenty-fourth minutes to add a clause to the end of the sentence so that the sentence reads, there were comments about addressing sidewalk installations citywide, including prior discussions at the Public Works Committee level, where the committee had concluded that this topic is moot due to issues of jurisdiction and domain regarding sidewalk maintenance.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of amending those minutes, as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. A motion carries four to three. So now we have the consent agenda before us. And Counselor Bisco, are you seeking to make another amendment?
No, I just wanted to comment that that vote was the three members of the Public Works Committee that were at that meeting. May I please finish?
It's completely out of context.
Mayor, you gave me the opportunities to just make my statement, and if you just allow me to make it, we'd be able to move on very quickly. My comment is only I would like for the record that the three members of the Public Works Committee did in fact vote for that amendment to the minutes.
Thank you. So all in favor of passing the consent agenda as amended, please raise your hand and say nay. I'm sorry, please raise your hand and say aye. I all opposed, please raise your hand, nay, nay. So motion carries six to one. With that, we, as mentioned, we are going to modify the agenda fair bit tonight. First thing we're going to do is discuss the Budget Committee appointments, since we have a at least one person here to to speak to that. Chris, you want to introduce the topic or?
Mayor, could I just note that Jeff Sheminski was having difficulties logging on his system wouldn't let him log on. He did provide me with his statement and answer to the question. So when you get there, please let me do that.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Also stated in the memo, we've got two vacancies and two applicants. Both the applicants were given the question there in the memo and invited to be here tonight. As Ruth Post just mentioned, we've got comments that she could read into the record if the council would like. And what we do, Van Hunzaker, though, is the other applicant, and he is here this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, we do have, we did ask the candidates to I'm sorry, Van, did you want to turn on your video so that you can speak to counsel if you choose? Thank you for so much for being here. Really appreciate that you're interested in volunteering even more than you already do for the city. But the city council wanted to welcome you and allow you to please introduce yourself, explain why you are interested in serving on the planning commission and what you believe your appointment would add. Oh, sorry, why you're interested in serving on the Budget Committee and why you're you believe your opponent would add to the Budget Committee.
Yes, thank you. My name is Van Hunzaker. I live at three twenty-four Vincent Street. Why I'm interested, well, I've probably lived here for thirty-six or seven years, can't remember now. Why I'm interested is I look like serving in the community. As many of you know, there's a variety of things that I've been involved with for the community. I happened to see on the weekly what's going on. I don't know what the term is that Ruth sends out a notice that she needed some people for the Budget Committee. I'm retired, so I feel like I have extra time that I could devote to that. So I am willing to serve. I mean, I know it's, you know, only for a limited time each year, so I feel like I have the time to do that. What I can bring to the Budget Committee is historical perspective. As you, many of you know, I was on the council and then was the mayor over twenty years ago now. And I feel like having historical context, particularly on muddy matters is is a benefit to the community. And I enjoy, you know, looking at all that information and you know, coming to conclusions on my own to and perspective to share with the group. I guess that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Appreciate your interest. And Ruth Post, you had a response from Jeff Schminski to the same question?
Yes. Jeff wrote in his email, if I was on the Budget Committee, I would bring a keen eye to what and where the money is being spent. We deserve a high quality of life, but that doesn't mean spending the most money. This quality of life can be done with due diligence in city spending and budgeting. There are a lot of unusual sources of income and of debt. I am sure it would be a learning experience, but I would put the effort into learning as much as I can and making appropriate suggestions. Jeff Sheminski.
Thank you very much. And we have a recommended motion if anyone is interested. Counselor Causey.
I moved that the city appoint Van Hunzaker and Jeff Sheminski to fill three-year terms on the budget.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Causey and seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Any further discussion? I'll just add that I just am super appreciative of both Van and Jeff for being willing and interested in serving and volunteering for the community. It's really an honorable thing and appreciate all that Vance, all the roles that Vance has played for the city in the past and looks to do in the future. With that, all in favor of passing the motion as made, please raise your hand and say aye. I.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Van, to yet another volunteer effort. Appreciate it so much. So with that, we have Chris McMorn here as well, and I'm gonna skip around on the agenda a little bit so that we have can get out of here at a reasonable hour this evening. But I wanted to consider item H four under new business, the inclusivity committee member appointment. And Counselor Andrade, would you like to speak to that? Process?
Yes, um, so the basically, we would like to appoint Christopher McMorn to the inclusivity committee as an official committee member. We had someone who couldn't make it anymore regularly, and Christopher has been a regular attendee in recent meetings. So because we, the sole purpose of official committee members is to determine a quorum and whether you can hold meetings, it made sense to see if he would volunteer to be an official committee member because the the more you're more likely to be able to hold a meeting if you have people who regularly attend. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. And I brought this up, but can you speak to, you know, I know that we've wanted to in the past, for instance, on this Budget Committee, we wanted to hold the application process so that it was equitable and available and inclusive to everyone. Why do you feel that it's not necessarily the same standards for the inclusivity committee?
So if you look at my email in the email thread with the city manager, I'm not trying to exclude anyone from being an official committee member. Everyone is welcome to be a committee member. If you're not an official committee member and you show up, you're a committee member within reason, like, you know, within the Philomath area. If you're outside of the Philomath area, then you're not. But if you're not an official committee member, you're a committee member, more or less. Everyone gets a vote, including unofficial committee members, and the it really just doesn't matter who are official and unofficial inclusivity committee members. I believe it's a waste of time and resources to notice the vacancy and go through the application review, interview, vote, appointment process. And many people don't even know that our committee exists still. So I would much rather have that the city invest that time and resources into promoting the committee and community outreach in general. And then next time, we can open it up to people to to more people and such. But seeing as Christopher is the only one who's been regularly attending and volunteered to do so, it made sense to appoint him, to request that we appoint him from council.
Thank you. And Counselor Bisco, before you ask your question, I just wanted, I know we have Christopher here. And and I know I'm gonna put you on the spot, but I think it's probably appropriate. But I think that we should ask Christopher the same question that we asked of the Budget Committee members. Is the council okay with that? I would like to make a motion that we ask Christopher the same question that we asked the Budget Committee members so that he can just address us and take three minutes out of our night to do that. Can I get a second? So I'll make, I made the motion, Counselor Lowe seconded that. I just think it, and I'll speak to it. I just think it's, he's here. I think that it is just a the right thing to do to allow someone to speak on their own behalf. And yeah, so that's what I would like. So Counselor Bisco, you have a hand up?
So I just would like to state that the inclusivity committee has made a recommendation, not an appointment, not a requirement that this council considered. It was simply a recommendation from their perspective. And that should hold merit, knowing that the inclusivity process of applications did not, is not established well or operate, I take that back. It operates differently in the first place than our normal appointment process and application process. It seems interesting that we're looking to go back to that appointment kind of process. Certainly, it didn't go well. So if this council chooses not to take this recommendation and to approve the inclusivity commissions, or excuse me, inclusivity committees recommendation that I would say that before we move with any further appointments, that we in fact make clear policy and clear guidance on how we would actually do that to ensure not a repeat of the last round of inclusivity applicants.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Counselor Andrade.
I agree with everything Counselor Bisco said. I, it's not that I don't want Christopher to speak, it's just that you've already embedded, Mayor, that we're already, you know, behind on our agenda. So it seems silly, like we're wasting time even right now discussing it. So I just think it's better to just move on with the vote and and then move on to other agenda items.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman.
Yeah, I I'm not opposed to having Mr. McMorn be on the committee. I'm a hundred percent opposed to the process that is being suggested here. The the level of hypocrisy is astounding to me, and I'm definitely gonna vote no for having this discussion continue here. There's a perfectly good procedure for getting people appointed to the committees. We have a process in place and just again, I'll just say the hypocrisy of this situation is Mount Everest. And I can't believe that we're having this conversation. Thanks.
Well, I don't see hypocrisy here, but I do see that it seems perfectly fine to invite Mr. McMorn to to express why he wants to be in the committee. I think it'd be fine. And I think we're making a tempest. What? How is that? Tempest in a teapot? So seems like we're wanting to keep things going slowly, so I think I agree with the mayor. So I don't see any hypocrisy, and I think it's just fine.
Thank you. Counsel Andrade.
Thank you, Counselor Lo. I would also like to point out that this is the exact same process that we did to initially appoint inclusivity committee members. Once the council messed up, like myself included, everyone messed up. I'm not trying to blame any one individual. It happens. Mistakes happen. And we caused a lot of harm. So then council tasked our committee with deciding who with with recommending a process, a structure of the committee that causes the least amount of harm, if any, preferably nothing. And we came back with this structure that was approved by the council, and we recommended people, original applicants, as the appointees, like and they were approved by council. So I don't understand why this is an issue, especially when it only has to do with quorum and everyone has a vote. It's it's not exclusionary.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor. And Counselor Causey.
And yes, I have to say that I share Counsel Lehman's perspective. You say it's not exclusionary, but you're not opening it up to the public in general who may be interested in participating. So I don't know how that's not exclusionary. And I recognize that Christopher is incredibly capable and would be a valued member. And I also recognize that there were revisions made, extensive revisions to our own application processes in order to recognize the input of the inclusivity committee. So from my perspective, you're appointing someone from within without giving any notice or invitation to others who may be interested. So and I don't, I don't even know that you're appointed. Maybe that appointment process is documented. I don't know. But I have a problem with it.
Counselor Lehman.
Yeah, maybe I should just describe a little bit more why I think there's a lot of hypocrisy involved in this situation. A couple of things. First, we had an applicant last time for the Budget Committee, but we decided not to accept that applicant because they had sent their application in late. We were then reopened the process, which we got two different applicants and accepted those. That's perfectly fine. But the argument was, hey, if people had known that there was an opening on this committee, more people would have applied. And then the second argument that that you want to have someone beyond the committee that's been going to the meetings. That's all fine and dandy, but you just said so yourself. There's a lot of people in the community who don't even know this committee exists. So by publishing that there's an opening on the committee, you're raising awareness that the committee even exists. And you may actually get more people involved and want to attend the meetings to begin with. So those are the primary reasons. And again, it has nothing to do with the candidate at all. It's the process. And I think that circumventing the processes that we have in place when it suits you is something that like the Finance Administration Committee, which I'm no longer a member of, has been accused of in the past by the very people that are proposing that we bypass all the procedures and processes that we have in place in this case. And I just think that reeks of hypocrisy, and I'm gonna vote no on it.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman. And so I'm I'm gonna, I would like to withdraw my motion to ask that Christopher speak. I am thinking back to the process that we had with the original selection of the inclusivity committee team, committee, and how painful that was for everybody involved. And I feel like we probably, as a council, are now recreating that experience for someone. I have, I completely agree that the process was not followed. I don't like the way that it's come about now. But I, we have someone before us who's very interested in serving on the committee. The the committee did recommend it as a whole, recommend that he join us or become a member of the committee. And I don't want to cause any further harm, and so I'm gonna vote in favor of this. I just kind of want it to be done and accepted. But I feel like pulling the Band-Aid off would be better. Counselor Andrade.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman, for elaborating a bit more. I'd like to point out that the Budget Committee is completely different. The the Budget Committee process is completely different. They there are official committee members on the Budget Committee who have a vote. Votes are limited to Budget Committee members, but that's not the case for the inclusivity committee. Everyone has a vote in the inclusivity committee. So that has no relevance here. And I understand that opening up applications to the public would be an advertisement of sorts. And we already have means of advertising. I the people who, it just doesn't make sense to me that if we have someone who regularly comes, that they not be you know, appointed for the quorum purposes and then advertise in the newsletters on Facebook. I've and just promoting the committee and asking people to, from a wide variety, reach out to organizations.
Thank you. Counselor Bisco.
So I too, I'm gonna share that this feels as dirty and nasty as this first round of applicants for this committee. I think that we have not, as a council, provided good guidance or best guidance perhaps on how this committee should function. When in fact, anyone who wishes to attend a publicly noticed meeting can attend and be considered as part of the the quorum, part of the committee, excuse me. And in fact, this committee has been publicly noticed since the summer of twenty twenty. We're at a muddy point right now where I don't know how to peel back from this. I appreciate very much Mr. McMorn's application and participation in city business. But I think that we have a bigger issue here when we talk about divisiveness and hypocrisy, and I will just make this point. And I would like to make it before I am terminated for making it in that I feel that the exclusionary practice that we're bouncing around back and forth here right now is the same process that happened when the committee chairs were reassigned, and no opportunity was given to be a member of the council on the inclusivity. So I'm having a hard time marrying the hypocrisy that I hear in one space, the hypocrisy I hear in another space, the lack of council guidance given to this committee. The fact that it has not been an external facing committee, it's been very internal facing committee. And there's flaws inherent in that, in that we have some amazing individuals who wish to be involved in the city of Philomath. And we are in fact preventing them from doing so because their micromanaging duties that are really probably more the council, and they should just be reviewing them afterwards. I would propose that we do in fact appoint Christopher McMorn. I would like to see him be given his opportunity chair. I understand that we have a lot of time constrictions, but we listened to a proposed motion at the beginning of this meeting that consumed a whole lot more. that consumed a whole lot more time than his three minutes. And I would like to see that we give some better guidance and support to the inclusivity committee for the intent of which it was originally designed.
So did you make a motion?
Do we have a motion on the table right now, just for clarity purposes?
Thank you. Thank you for asking that clarifying question. Ruth Post was my, City Recorder, was my withdrawal of the motion sufficient to withdraw it?
You may withdraw your motion as long as no one on the council objects to withdrawing your motion.
So it sounds like Counselor Bisco is objecting to remove the withdrawal of my motion, which is fine.
Mr. Brewer's the parliamentarian, but that's my understanding of, of the rule. If, if Counselor Bisco objects to you withdrawing the motion, then the motion stays on the table.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. So all in favor of having Christopher answer the question that was offered to the Budget Committee appointees? Please raise your hand and say aye.
A point of order.
Yes.
Counselor, I think Counselor Bisco may, did, did you think that it was a different motion? Counselor Bisco.
I actually am gonna withdraw any implied motions. This is just not good space. And having been on the receiving end of exactly these types of practices and yes, discriminations and yes, divisiveness. I'm just going to withdraw any implied motion and abstain from a vote at this point.
Okay, so I am going to withdraw my motion unless there is an objection to doing so. Counsel Andrade, do you object?
No, I make a motion to appoint Christopher McMoran to the inclusivity committee.
Great, thank you. And I'll second that. All in favor of appointing Christopher McMoran, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, please use your hands to say nay. All abstained, please raise your hand and say aye. I do not know what that vote was, honestly. Can we recreate the vote, please? Because I am confused by what just happened. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. I see five hands. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Okay, I see one hand. All abstentions, please raise your hand and say aye. See you. Okay, so motion carries five to one with one abstention. Christopher, I'm sorry for that process. I, it's painful, I know. But thank you so much for being willing to serve on the City of Philomena and on the inclusivity committee. Really appreciate your time and your commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Christopher. We appreciate it.
And so with that, we're gonna, as I mentioned, we are skipping around on the agenda. We have a, we're gonna go next to I, one ordinance, eight, number eight sixty, we're gonna, the second reading. Jim?
That's okay.
Put you on the spot there.
This is ordinance number eight sixty, amending Philomena Municipal Code two point ten council rules. It's the second reading.
Excellent. And with that, we have a roll call. Vote.
Mayor Jones, Counselor Bisco's hand raised.
Counselor Bisco, you have a comment on this second reading here?
I do, but it goes to the bigger issue of council decorum and council behavior. And I'd like to not be interrupted for this brief statement, please. So I think it's very interesting that we can deliberate about the word coercion, but you can press votes and terminate conversations with point of order calls and pauses in meetings for a word like discrimination. Or the simple fact that if we had not paused the meeting and if mayor, you would stop interrupting, you would see the point of why certain things are brought before this council. You do give generously to the time that you allow certain individuals to speak, including the city manager. You are often discriminatory and divisive in your practices here. And I think we have seen that very clearly. The council rules in many ways, we spent, I believe it's either six or seven meetings on that could be better suited and aimed towards community development and any number of other council outcomes. And in fact, what we did is we drafted a punitive interpretive document that is left to the ambiguity of how the council might interpret a word like discrimination. Tonight was a poor reflection of what this council could be. It's because of your leadership, Mayor Jones. You failed to include this council as a body in your decision-making, in your policies and practices that remain not transparent. I am ashamed to be a member of this council. I am not, however, ashamed to represent the City of Philomena. And these council rules are offensive. As is the behavior of this council and the interpretation of your point of orders. And your, let me interrupt you for the fifteenth time tonight.
I will respond in that I believe that your comments are completely off-base and accusatory. And it's clear to me that you do not know what the definition is of a point of order. And you don't know how it's supposed to be used. And there's a lot of education opportunity there. That is no poor reflection on you, but there's some research that you could spend on that and figure that out. It's pretty clear to me, but that's okay. I see that Counselor Nielsen has her hand up.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, I wanted to say that we're all individuals and one voice is no more how more influential than any other voice. We are council. And then council, there's supposed to be equity and the power and authority of voices. And so the amount of time we spend definitely is not balanced time represented. We have much more work to be done. And if we can keep our comments equitable in time spent per council member, I think we'd accomplish a lot more.
Counselor Nielsen, your connection is very poor.
I'm sorry.
You might wanna shut off your video. But so with that, seeing no Sorry, Counsel Nielsen, I can't really comprehend what you're saying. But Counselor Lo.
You know, a lot of times I kind of think of council being analogous to a court proceeding, where you've got a judge and you've got a set order of how things progress. And I think if you didn't have a presiding officer to basically maintain order, move proceedings along, you know, call, call the attorneys out of order or whatever, different times, you would never get anything done. And I, I think there's something like that with, with any government body, that someone's gotta be, well, your presiding officer, rightly or wrongly, may make the wrong calls, may make the right calls. But I think if we were all to follow sort of that, that order, I think there is a time that's legitimate, where we question your judgment. But I think there's a process that allows us to do that. And I don't think it benefits us as a council or as a body or getting the people's work done by just going on for an internally long meeting. This meeting has been a waste for me, this whole council. Personally, I think that I could have spent more time, better time doing something else. Because there's just been an awful lot of dialogue that's gone nowhere. And we're not doing the, the work we're elected to do. So essentially, I think there is, we all have to recognize that the person who's the mayor is a presiding officer. And if, and not to be challenging that all the time. And if, and if the mayor makes the wrong call, there's a process to deal with that. So it's just very sad to have this all be happening and not feel like I'm really doing my job as a counselor.
And Counselor Nielsen, wanna try again?
Yes, can I try again?
Yes.
Is it better now?
Yes.
All right. I believe there's a, a little bit of inequality in the time each counselor is given to express their opinions or the amount of time that some counselors monopolize the, the quantity of time that is taken during a council meeting. A council is only powerful when all voices are heard and not just a few that tend to dominate. Christopher McMoran is also on the Streetscape Sidewalk Inlay Design Committee. And it's been such a long meeting already. He would like to be heard in regards to that. So is it possible for us to move on and, and maybe get some other council business done that's not our city?
That will be the next item on the Agenda after we vote on the second reading. So with that, we have a roll call vote. City Recorder.
Matt Lehman.
Yes.
David Lo.
I'm sorry, I, I don't even know what I'm voting for, but.
This is on ordinance number eight six zero, amending the council rules.
Thank you. Yes.
Teresa Nielsen.
Yes.
Jessica Andrade.
You're muted.
This is a tough one. I'm going to say yes.
Catherine Bisco.
I also will vote to approve them, but I would appreciate if my statement, my concern of those council rules was included in the minutes.
Ruth Cozy.
Yes.
Chaz Jones.
Yes, great. So thank you for that. With that, the last thing we're going to discuss tonight is the downtown Streetscape Sidewalk Inlay Design Services contract. So Chris or Chelsea, Chelsea, you might as introduce that.
Yes, I'll start out. And Christopher, thanks for sticking around in support of this. So I had a staff report, agenda item summary in the packet. And if you'll remember, in November, the council approved spending thirty-five hundred dollars for the design portion of the sidewalk inlays. That was a rough guesstimate of how much that portion of the project would cost. And when we finally were able to get a good number of proposals in, we did note that that, that was not a cost that was seen in the middle of the proposals. So we, the committee did an amazing job. They've been through a lot trying to choose this designer. And they settled on Mark's Garcia design, which you'll see the proposal in the packet for six thousand five hundred dollars for the work, which includes designing five versions for inlays, four of which would be selected to move forward with. One would be held for future inlays. And the committee would just like to make that recommendation. Ruth is also on, Ruth Cozy is on our committee. And I would like to make a recommendation for the council to approve a word of a contract to Mark's Garcia. And I do want to note, which I also wrote in the staff report, that there were some other designers which the committee was very interested in, not for this particular part of the project, the Streetscape project. But they did note that several of those artists may be a good selection for some of the other parts of the project. So you would probably see some of those names coming forward again. And Christopher, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, I mean, I think that, that's a good summary. I think the only thing I would add is just that, again, the committee, we've been doing this for months. It's been a pretty exhaustive process with three different RFPs. And we went through all of the proposals and graded them. And this was the unanimous recommendation of the committee. So I would really urge you to, to approve it. Because if we don't, we're a little bit in trouble in terms of the timeline of getting these in with the Streetscape's project. But I'm also happy to answer any questions on behalf of the committee.
You. Counselor Nielsen.
So I moved to approve staff to award a contract to Mark Garcia Design an amount of sixty-five hundred dollars.
Excellent. We had a race for a second, but the first was a, a motion by Counselor Nielsen. And I'm gonna say Counselor Cozy won the race for a second. I just have a quick question. Why, what happened to the first two RFPs that went out?
So we received one proposal for the first. A lot of it was timing. We were trying to do this going into the holiday season. It was just a, it was a kind of a bad time of year. And the second, on the second go around, the same company submitted the proposal again. So the second time around, we tried to do a design build option. Maybe the manufacturers were more interested in designing in-house and submitting. But again, it was right, that was right in the holiday season. And we only got the same submission from the first design company. And they were included as well in this round. They asked to carry over their proposal into this round.
Got it. Good, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of passing the motion as made, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent.
Thank you for your
And thank you. Thank you, Chris and Chelsea. Really appreciate it. And in the spirit of jumping around the agenda, staff report, Chris, do you want to offer anything? Do you have any reports?
I mentioned earlier, Mike Mazenski started his first day today as finance director. Super excited to get him on board. His staff is excited to have a supervisor again to help give some direction to finance department. And so really looking forward to working with him. He brings good energy, good perspective. And he's jumping right in. We're looking at capital improvement project list to get to the fireworks committee and utility rate and, and all kinds of finance stuff going to the finance committee. So he's jumping right in both feet here to get things going. So that's kind of on the, on the staffing level. I will report our, our planner is recovering. The brace is off and we're in a, doing a little bit of strength training, increasing motion of the leg. And hopefully within the next few, well, I think the next three to four weeks before he starts putting any weight on it or anything. So still recovering in good spirits. But again, if you keep your, keep thoughts, prayers with him, would appreciate that. So he can get to full recovery, get back to us on the planning side. On the planning front, we got a meeting coming up next week for a major modification to the subdivision application on Milk Pond Crossing. That staff report will be out tomorrow for a public's review. And so you can take a look for that on the website. I'll be emailing that out to the planning commissioners and also the city council. So you see that. The major modification does just go to the planning commission, unless there's an appeal, which case you'd see it. But otherwise, it'll just be a decision of the planning commission as a type three application. Received another application for a subdivision last week. It's a smaller, I haven't looked at that close. I think it's ten to maybe twelve houses off of Main Street. There's a previous large lot with a house on it and they're looking to divide that into multiple housing. Looks like single-family residential. Again, kind of a main private drive coming off of Main Street that'll service those. I wanna say eight to twelve houses. main private drive coming off of Main Street that'll service those, I want to say eight to twelve houses, that to double check on the numbers there. A couple outline adjustments, some other thing keeping me busy. So that the planning front uh is busy. Um, the planning commission is well underway, uh, had a first meeting on the housing policies, and they've got some submittals and some information the other for their uh next meeting here next week that will go out um after the hearing. We're hoping to spend a little bit of time at least to review what had been submitted, and then their next meeting. Uh, they'll be looking at uh housing policies uh for the city of Flemish. Eventually, that will come to you um as well for for review on the housing side. Um, you know, I've got a few other things, but the, you know, I was getting on here. I'm happy to answer any specific questions. I see a couple of hands up, so I'd I'd rather answer specific questions you've got than kind of go on about the things I'm working on.
Sure, Council Nielsen?
Yes, um, yes, is that, can you hear me?
We can.
I just turned my view. Um, I I just need to know whether the grant applications for those city park bench, is that a time sensitive? I know we had it on the agenda for tonight, but we haven't talked about it. Is that grant time sensitive? Or can we push that back?
Chelsea, my understanding was that uh city can apply and the city council can later approve uh choose to approve accepting the money if we get it, but Chelsea, is that correct?
Right, it's a fairly um simple grant application process. I've looked at it. The deadline is March twenty second to apply. Um, so if we aren't able to get approval from the council tonight, I can go ahead and apply. It again, there's not much staff time, and it is a project that um has been identified. And then if we are awarded, then the council can choose to accept those funds or not.
Yes.
So do we have to go to have her look for the um apply for that grant or not? I'm just not clear.
We do not need to. It was more of a courtesy.
Okay.
Real quick on that, if if it's something that's gonna take a considerable amount of staff time, I'll typically bring that to the council ahead of time on these small ones. Um, it's not um uncommon to bring those to you if we get awarded them, just to actually get them accepted, so. Um, it's really a matter of how much staff time's involved and how much um latitude I've got on on making those assignments. This one's pretty simple.
Is the Hall of Fame sponsorship or the low income housing water assistance program? Are either of those time sensitive that need to be addressed this evening?
Um, the Hall of Fame has got some time. They've got, I think, another month or two. Um, the low income, the sooner I get direction there, the sooner I can implement it.
Yeah. So um, I was proposing that we just push that off. It's been a long meeting. But if somebody wants to make a motion to discuss one of those, that's fine.
I've, I'd like to make a motion.
Point of order.
Water.
Wait, point of order? He's sorry, I thought Chris.
Sorry, let her finish to make.
I thought Chris wasn't finished.
Sorry. Teresa, do you want to finish?
I'm sorry, I I thought you asked for um a motion.
I I said that, yeah.
Like to discuss water assistant program. I would like to get that started. The current economic environment in our community, I think that would be meaningful.
Okay, um, do I have a second? So we have a motion made by Council Nielsen and seconded by Council Cossey to discuss the um low income water rate uh water assistance program agreement. Which is item H six on the agenda. Uh, all in favor of discussing that item now, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm all opposed, please raise your hands and say nay. So motion carries six to one. Chris, do you want to introduce that topic?
I will. So this uh we included the agreement here. This would be entered in agreement with the uh community services consortium to receive payments on behalf of Flemish utility ratepayers. Uh, the ratepayers would apply through the community services consortium for utility payment assistance. And then submit their, you know, submit their their water bill essentially. And then the consortium would make payment on their behalf. So in order for us to receive that payment on their behalf, this agreement uh needs to be entered into. As was mentioned earlier tonight, this is uh not a long term uh program. Uh, this is only scheduled to go through twenty twenty four. Uh, but do you think that this is is helpful, as I said in my staff report? If the council approves this, we'll get it out in the newsletter, get on social media, and really push the word. Um, our utility uh clerk is very, very good and knows a lot of people that do struggle month to month. And I know that she'll be making them aware of this program as well. In fact, she's already talked to several of them about this program uh coming forward, uh even a couple of months back when we knew that it was um gonna be rolled out. So I'd recommend approval of the program so we can start advertising it. No real cost to the city, um, other than the time we're spending tonight and uh just getting the agreement signed and executed and pretty straightforward.
Great, thank you. So I'd look for a motion to discuss this. Um, Council Low?
Uh, I'd make the motion to discuss.
Or, can I, okay, go ahead. Actually, I I was, I was hoping to get the recommended motion um.
Sure, um, I moved that the city council direct staff to execute the vendor agreement with community services consortium and promote the low income household water assistance program.
Great, thank you. So I have a motion made by Council Low and seconded by Council Nielsen. Any questions, Council Low? You have a question for staff or?
Um, well.
Or speak to it.
I I I just speak to the motion, I uh, in the finance committee, we talked about this versus the other low income uh relief that we give to our ratepayers and uh this, this uh that was coming out at the time seemed to be also a good program. Uh, it's my understanding that when the time runs out in this, there's no barrier to the city going back just to really putting uh in place the program we had before, if the city manager could comment in that. And then also city manager, if you could comment on the amount of this particular program, uh how much they would pay of a of a low income person's water bill? Would they pay the whole thing or is there some formula? Those two questions. Thanks.
Thanks. So there is a formula. I don't know what that formula is, uh, but it is needs based, and so not anybody would be able to apply it. It's based on your income. Um, but uh, the exact income level, and and if there's a percentage that gets paid, I I'm not sure what the specifics are um on that, but I could, I could do some finding out and and get an email off to everybody, let you know how that goes. Um, in fact, what I'll probably do is ask for utility clerk to follow up and figure out, because she'll be the one needing to relay that information to people. Um, but I I'll get that information forwarded on to everybody. And then your earlier question about going back, you know, we, we didn't use to have a low income rate. Uh, that was something that got added when we increased our water rates. We, we left the rate, we kind of locked in that rate as the other rates went up, and we called that the low income rate, and then we had everybody else's rate. And so when we lowered everybody's rates back down, we lowered the rates back down to where it had been before. Um, but the decision was made to not go any lower than where we had been in previous years, and so did not kind of do it artificially low utility rate. Everybody's paying that lower utility right now, uh, which is kind of back where we started before we had to start raising, so. If the committee wants to do something different, that, again, we'll be talking about that at the finance committee level, as we talk utility rates going into this budget season, um, but at least at the last meeting when we talked water rates in response to receiving the twelve million dollars from the state legislature. Uh, that was the decision that the committee made in the recommendation of city council at that time.
Okay, um, if I could just ask a follow up.
Right.
Did that, um, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is the haven't we for a number of years, not just recently, but haven't we for a number of years offered some sort of a uh a program of lower utility rates or water rates to, we haven't?
Uh, I believe that didn't, that didn't start until we started raising rates, but we started raising rates five years ago, four or five.
Well, that's what I'm, so I guess I'm going back to is is remembering that it it was several years ago. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Council Cossey?
Um, I just wanted to ask with respect to um rate assistance it for low income families, isn't that or utility assistance hasn't then been provided historically through Vinamoses? Or am I misremembering that?
Yes, yeah. So we've always had a program where we use some of the utility funds, so the water fund or the sewer fund. And we've made contributions annually to Vinamoses and We Care, both of those programs. And we've referred our, our customers to those programs for assistance, and so it's again, it's not been a lower fee that we've charged. It's just been assistance that we've provided financially to these organizations. Uh, where our utility customers could go for help, so. I I guess, yes, we've had kind of that program. Um, the Council Low, I think, was referring to a lower rate, and we've not had a lower rate per se until we started increasing, but we have always tried to provide assistance. We recognize that there are people in community that struggle month to month. Um, sometimes they have a few tough months, sometimes it's an ongoing issue, and uh we've always tried to provide assistance for those individuals and those families.
Great, thank you. So all in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, it's nine thirty, and we're going to go ahead and adjourn, so thank you.
Everybody. Hi, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.